The new fiscal year. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the County Commissioner's Special Meeting for June 28, 2023, the budget edition. Everyone will call the meeting to order and Commissioner Jones.
President.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Golds also here. Would you stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I agree. Public hearing. I'd like to open up the public hearing for fiscal year 2023-2024. Albany County proposed budget. Would anybody in the room like to speak on or against the Albany County proposed budget for fiscal year 2023-2024? How about online? Hey, last call in person and online. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
I will move to the closed public hearing. Second.
Moved in second today for the discussion. Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll go same side. That motion carries. Four comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? We'll go first in person and then we'll go online. Any comments from the public? How about online? Last caller, person in online. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second today for the discussion. Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll go same side. That motion carries. Five disclosures. Commissioner Brown.
I have none.
Commissioner Jones?
I have none.
I have none. Also, six considerations of change on the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Super seven. Present for approval Amendment One to Contract between the Wyoming Department of Health, Avery Health Division and Albany County Board of Commissioners as governing body for the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program for state population response funding in an amount not to exceed $200,000 $100 through October 15, 2024.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry to sneak this on your agenda, but the state, of course, wants it back by the end of this year. So this amendment, they're actually, we're actually receiving more money than we were originally receiving. So we originally had $142,600. We're getting an additional $57,500. I don't know the reason. You don't really ask questions, but if they want to give us some more money because I think we're doing good, we'll take it. Heather, nothing else has changed on the agreement. The time of the term is still the same, but everything else, and everything else is the same.
Commissioners, any questions for Bailey? Yeah, I entertain a motion for item seven, please.
I move that we approve. Item seven. Has presented. Second.
This was moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
I'll go same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. And it looks like we have you again for item eight. Present for approval Amendment One to the Contract between the Wyoming Department of Family Services and Albany County Board of Commissioners to amend the responsibilities of the community juvenile services board from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So during the legislative session, there were some items that were changed in regards to this funding. That's why we had to do a second application this year, even though it's usually a two-year agreement. So this is the amendment to go with that application. There were just some some items that were changed because of that. Kurt has already looked through it, as well as Jennifer's already looked through it. They agreed to it as well because we run this through the attorney's office. Otherwise, it was.
Commissioners, any questions for Bailey? And I think Kurt's offline too. If you have a question for Kurt. Okay, I entertain a motion for eight, Emily.
I move that we approve. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll go same side. That motion carries. Item nine. Present for approval fiscal year 2023-2024 Albany County Budget. Tracy and Kayla. Please, thank you.
Okay. Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. First off, I want to thank everybody for helping me. Tracy's seasoned, but helping me through this budget process. We did change some things this year. I think we changed things for the better. I think it went very smooth. We saved a lot of paper. I know that, which is always a good thing, but I just, I want to thank you all for helping me and to everybody that worked so hard to get through this. I think it went really well. From the proposed budget, there were some changes that we made after the fact. The $1.3 million that was still left over for ARPA funds, we did the revenue replacement again this year. So we took that out of the treasure, the assessor, the clerk, and the clerk of district court salary line items. So those salary line items from the proposed to the resolutions would have gone down because then that $1.3 would go into the Beach Street Fund. And then the $100,000 we took out of economic development for the airport, and we took $100,000 out of 1% so that we wouldn't deplete that economic development fund because utilities and any kind of upkeep on that building has to come out of that fund. So we didn't want to deplete it. So we took $100 out of that and $100 out of 1%. Health insurance went up. We increased the admin fees and the professional claims fees, as well as EMA in the past did not have health insurance. They do now, so that match, we had to take out of the health insurance match, we had to increase that amount. And then also a Cobra administration fee that was not coming out of the health insurance amount, so that went up. And the reason why it has gone up is we are working through the renewal right now, and it looks like we will have probably an increase in our insurance. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough money to cover that prior to even going through the renewal process. I think that's all on the expenditure side. Tracy's got some changes that she made. For the changes that I made, I went back after the voucher run was completed and updated all the cash on hands, which resulted in a few minor changes. Nothing to the general fund. Let's see, the cash on hand for direct aid was a little bit less, so that just decreased the transfer into the county general fund by $1,800. And then the cash. My phone isn't cooperating. The cash on hand for the health insurance was a little bit less because we had that last claims payment that came in for June. But it wasn't that much of a deal or much of a change for that. Abandoned vehicle, the cash on hand was a little bit different because we did the annual transfer to get back to that $37,066 to maintain that population, $1 per person that lives in our county. But that just decreased the amount we will transfer in next fiscal year, which it could end up actually being more if we collect more, review more titles, or pay less tow bills for the abandoned vehicles. The Economic Development Fund had a little less cash than what we originally projected. Utilities for the Beach Street property being paid out of there. The Keating Economic Development Fund was more because we received their payments from the Keating Corporation. Our revenue loss had less on there because of the transfer that was done for the payroll for the month of June that where they're coming out of the general fund and being paid for through our revenue loss. And then IT had a little less fun. IT fund had a little less cash as there is a voucher that was paid out of there, or a couple vouchers, but we just increased the transfer into there, but I did that from 1% rather than direct aid because then I'd have to move, we'd have to move, and it's been more difficult. So we just did 1% into there. And then that decreased the amount or what was left over at 1%, we transferred to the Beach Street property as well. That updated the cash on hand for the impact assistance fund. And those were, we received a minor amount of money for the choke cherry project. And then there were some bills paid for Roden Bridge out of Boswell Springs money that's left over. And going forward, the cash on hand number, we still have at a little over 20 or 2.3 million for the general fund, which I feel is still fairly conservative, but that will give us room. If we come in higher than that for the coming fiscal year, for all those unknown items that we end up having to amend for down the road, so we'll have some, we should have some funds to be able to do those things. With that, I would answer any questions or?
Commissioners, any questions? Not seen it here, but I saw it last night. Is there still one year of the 1% for 2001?
Yes, so on the very last page of this big sheet here. So the first two from the left are the 2001, the 2001 upfront is where they bonded the money, and that's what's remaining left there. And then the 2001 overpayment, when when that specific purpose tax gets paid off, you can't shut that tax off the same day, so it goes for the fall until the next full quarter. So that's where that money is derived from as well. But yes, there are funds remaining in those two.
Will that expire in 2001? Will we shut it off?
The 2001 is complete, yes.
Okay.
So that's, we will not get any additional funds into the 2001 or 2010. 2018 is the only active specific purpose tax. Can't say specific today. So that's the only one that there, there's money that will be going into. All these other funds are available for expenditures, but they have to be used pursuant to that specific purpose that was on the ballot. For instance, in the 2001, we had courthouse renovation. So we can't use that for 501 Iverson, but we can use it for within this building, like a piece of it could be for like the road and some of those items.
So yeah, thanks. Thank you guys. Well, I want to say you guys, thank you for everybody, for the department heads and the ones who did such a wonderful job with the budgets and the explanations. You know, if you just want to interview with your day, try not to. Thank you guys for the individual meetings, Commissioners for doing those individual things and being prepared a day or less than a half a day. That is great, and we'll look forward to doing that again next year. So Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item nine.
I move that we approve. Item nine is presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Would you like me to read the resolution into the records so that all of the individual numbers?
Sure, if you'd like to.
It was a resolution making appropriations and authorizing expenditure funds to cover Albany County for the fiscal year of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Whereas on the 20th day of June, 2023, myself, Budget Officer for Albany County, and Tracy Fletcher, the treasurer, prepared and submitted to the board the county budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. And whereas such budget will be entered in the records of the board of Albany County Commissioners and was made available to the public. And whereas notice of a public hearing on such budget, together with the summary of said budget, was published on June 21, 2023 in Larry Boomerang and the Legal Newspaper of General Circulation in Albany County. And whereas a public hearing was held on June 28, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. in the county commissioners' chambers, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas following such public hearing, there were alterations and revisions made in such proposed budget, all of which appear in the final levy. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, the county budget as submitted with alterations and revisions as attached, be adopted as an official county budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. And be in further resolved that the following appropriations be made beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024, and that the expenditures of each office, officer, department, or spending agency be limited to the amount there and inappropriate. County Commissioners, 331,716. General Accounts, $3,383.2. Building and grounds, 217,059. Clerk, 581,250. Grants management, 192,626. Elections, 40,775. Information technology, 342,443. Human resources, 220,476. Treasure, 502,974. Assessor, 269,848. Sheriff, 4,153,320. Attorney, 1,113,132. Intergovernmental, 771,500. Planning, 408,977. Engineering, 75,000. Coroner, 195,272. Extension, 80,940. Clerk of district court, 308,600. District court, 140,108. Circuit court, $1,000. Roden Bridge, $862,822. Fire warden, $120,482. Public health, 430,776. And detention center medical, 706,344. For a total general fund of $15,450,442. Our estimated grant and other special expenditures is $14 million. Our estimated special fund revenue expenditures, employee health benefit, $2,625,122. County road fund, $300,000. Abandoned vehicles, $15,634. Commissary account, $50,000. Jill Endowment overage, $830,000. debit card transaction fees, $2,706.61. Vehicle replacement, $183,182. Grant match, $786,886. IT technology, $403,939. Drug asset forfeiture, $22,603. Economic development, $390,530. Impact assistance, $1,039. Oh, not $39, $1,039,388.7. 2001 specific purpose tax, $129,716. 2010 specific purpose tax, $1,388.29.27. 2018 specific purpose tax, $4,459,691. Fire reimbursement, $3 million. For a total special fund of $15,750,797.95. Our direct aid appropriations, $1,500,800. 1% optional sales tax appropriations, $1,994,46. American Plan Rescue, American Rescue Plan Act, $2,758,158. L A T C F, $2,172,176. Emergency reserve, $1,779,240. Contingency reserve, $4,351,776. General cash revenue, $2,928,478. County compensation plan reserve, $1,883.39. County buildings reserve, $1,123,849. Beach Street Improvement Fund, $4,169,14. Fair board appropriations, $331,521.42. Library board appropriation, $1,175,504.39. For a total appropriation requirements of $70,473,449.76. Total estimated general fund revenue, $15,552,279. Our total estimated grant and other special revenue is $14 million. Our total estimated special fund revenues, $15,750,797.95. Total cash available for the budget, $15,157,264. Our total estimated direct aid revenue, $3,527,936. Total estimated 1% optional sales tax revenue, $2,219,989. American Rescue Plan Act, $2,758,158. Total estimated fair board revenue, $331,521.42. And the total estimated library revenue, $1,175,504.39. For an estimated total revenue of $70,473,449.76. That is our budget. Thank you.
But the move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
I'll go same side. That motion carries. Thank you all for that and for getting that out of the way three days early. Awesome. The next item on the agenda will be executive session. I entertain a motion to be bring in session.
I move that we exit regular session and move into executive session. Pursuant to 16-4-05-8.
The second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing taking an all's in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
There is leaving regular session at 9:51 and entering executive session. We'll be back, but you're online. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Action if needed regarding a fixed possession, there is no action required. And signal more business before the county commissions June 28th. You can record or call me here. Have a great afternoon and we'll talk to you soon. Bye.